Good evening, everyone. This is the council meeting, or I should say, the workshop meeting for June 24th of 2024 is now in session. We'll stand for the slide.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Willard, could you do the local?
Yes. Mr. Heller is absent. Mrs. Fovia, sorry.
Present.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mr. Duplikie.
Present.
Ms. Sawicki.
Present.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Present.
Mayor Leslie.
Here.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Willward.
Mrs. Boyle.
Present.
Chief Montella is absent. Acting chief is absent. Role call complete.
Okay. And that opens up the first public discussion session. Anybody from the public? First public discussion session. No one? Okay, then we can move on then. We don't have... Fire chief's not here.
One concerns the Our Lady of Charity School property. My office has drafted an informal agreement of sale for the purchase of this particular parcel of property. I have forwarded it to the attorney for the Archdiocese of Philadelphia, and I am waiting to receive his edits and reply to that proposed agreement of sale. Number two with regard to the lease with the County of Delaware that we have regarding the Brookhaven District Court. As council is aware, we have traded various lease proposals, rent proposals, between the county and the borough. I will be meeting with a representative from the Delaware County Council this Wednesday afternoon up at council chambers to see if we can reach a meeting of the minds concerning a proposed new lease, again, relative to Brookhaven District Court. And again, I will keep council advised as we proceed. Number three, we continue to be successful in collecting delinquent sewer and trash fee accounts. As you know, earlier this year, the borough filed 50 sewer fee municipal liens and 33 trash fee municipal liens with the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas for delinquent property owners. To date, the borough has collected $9,595.50 in delinquent 2023 trash fees and $13,283.36 in delinquent 2023 sewer fees. So the total collected to date is $22,878.86. So that endeavor has been quite successful as we took a more robust approach to collecting on those delinquencies. With regard to a new ordinance I have drafted relative to the International Property Maintenance Code, the 2018 edition, that proposed ordinance has been duly advertised in the Delaware County Daily Times, and it will be scheduled for a motion for adoption by Borough Council next Monday, July 1st. As I indicated earlier this month, we did receive new collective bargaining proposals from the FOP. As council is aware, our collective bargaining agreement is scheduled to expire on December 31st of this year, so we will begin negotiations to hopefully arriving at a new amicable collective bargaining agreement. Again, I will serve as council to the police committee and will be available at their beck and call as they move forward with various proposals.
You know, we do have a labor lawyer, Mr. McLaughlin, who has served us extremely well, and we had wonderful results with him for the last 20 years. You know, he's like the best lawyer in the five-county area. Why don't we... Where is he?
I haven't seen him. You guys don't talk to him? I had him for every year when I was the president and I was on the committee. Of course, I'm not on the committee, but that's neither here nor there. But I think we really need to get somebody who really makes the FOP shake because you are borough solicitor with all deference. I was too, but I didn't do negotiating. I got the professional labor people. And the other question I have, why have you... The lease, I forgot that you mentioned it. I don't want to go for 10 years. They have shifted us with the 10 years. I want to go to four because we've got to have... We have to be able to have it more frequently because they go 10 years and then it's already 12 years because... And we haven't got an increase in 12 years. This is ridiculous. So I really think it needs to be four, George, because it doesn't make sense to have 10 because the county falls around and it's 12, 14 years, and we're being paid the same money as 14 years ago. And the cost of everything is not... It's not... I mean, we're getting shifted and we have to start watching the money because that's why I'm saying the negotiations, we really have to take a harder position with the police. And we have to take a harder position with the county because they're ignoring us. I mean, for a year after you contacted them, they haven't done a thing. And it's not fair because we're stuck with this lease number that is 12 years old.
We're just beginning negotiations. I didn't get a response for a while.
But that's what happens. We never get a response because they know they can just drag it. They all do it. And it has nothing to do with you. It just... Because it's a borough, they just let us dangle, and they don't care. I just don't think it's right for residents to not get enough money that really... Because our electric and everything else is going up, and we're not being compensated fairly. So I just wanted to say that to you because I know when you talk to them, you will bring that up. And I just really feel we have to go to four. 10 is way too... In the kind of society we're in, 10 is way too long. And they dilly-dally anyway. They don't even want to negotiate fairly.
What's the norm for most of these types of contracts?
What I would suggest, Janice, as somebody who has negotiated multiple commercial leases in both the public and private sector, most commercial leases, the minimal term is five years, so...
Well, that's five would be better than 10.
Yeah, so what I would suggest, if council doesn't wish to go 10, perhaps we can negotiate a five-year lease, but generally, most commercial leases in the industry, rarely do we see terms below five years. But I will bring that to council's attention when I speak with them this week.
It's a county. 10 was the county's idea. It was never ours. They were the ones that dragged it out.
With regard to the labor lawyer, I have no objection to bringing in the labor lawyer, but sometimes we find that we initially have the negotiation committee do some of the groundwork early that may save legal fees by not bringing in the labor lawyer until we have sort of mushroomed and put together what the issues are that are in dispute. Oftentimes, we have issues that, again, are much easier to negotiate, what we call low-hanging fruit, and other issues that can be much more difficult. So it's my recommendation that, again, that I have no objection to bringing in the labor lawyer, but perhaps we don't necessarily need to bring him in now, but perhaps at a later date. But again, I will leave that to Borough Council's best judgment and decisions as we move forward in this process. Next item on my agenda concerns Brookhaven Storage. This is the land development project, the self-storage facility on Brookhaven Road there that is just about completed. The developer has requested a partial escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements. Mr. Catania has reviewed that request and is recommending a fairly large release of public improvements. I have drafted a resolution for council's consideration. I have forwarded to you, I guess, one day last week. So that is a resolution for Borough Council's consideration next Monday as well at the July 1st meeting.
Do you know when it's going to be totally completed? Do you have any idea? Because when I drive by, it almost looks to me like it's really completed. I thought it was really completed.
Probably where we're at, Charles, 90-95%.
We had the gentleman who owns...
Really?
We had the gentleman who owns the adjoining property here a couple months ago.
For the curb?
The remaining item is that PANDOT won't release, won't approve the final work because the connection between Brookhaven Storage and the property next door is not ADA compliant, so PANDOT's refusing to approve that. So that's going to hold this project up until that comes to some resolution.
Okay. You had mentioned that before. That's right.
And finally, there was an issue, I believe, earlier last month with regard to a potential refund of some building permit fees to a senior citizen. I have provided certain recommendations to council that that would be generally through an affirmative motion at next Monday evening's meeting. I don't know the precise amount, but that would be an action item for council's consideration, again, at the July 1st monthly meeting.
Yeah, it was updated by Chris Polo today, so it isn't going to be as much as they expected. Because the insurance company apparently took responsibility for some of the funding, so...
And I assume for Mr. Willward's edification, that motion would probably be under the Building Committee's chairperson's report, you know, and the precise amount, whatever that is, I have no objection to that. And other than that, Mr. Vice President, I can report general progress.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wills. At least, Mr. Catania?
Thank you. Copyright report is in the agenda package. Under the 2024 street resurfacing, just received, literally just received, an email from A.F. Damon, who's the contractor, that they tentatively plan to start on July 1st. That's going to be subject to us receiving the PANDOT approval for that, but I will provide that schedule to Mr. Willward so he has it and he can advertise that. We expect to have the PANDOT approval by the end of this week. Samson Park, the DCNR grant, we had a bid opening set for last Thursday. We actually received zero bids for that job. I did speak to three contractors who had contacted us with questions on it with various reasons why they didn't. We're going to recommend that we rebid that with a target late August so council can consider an award at the September meeting. Under the...
That's the multipurpose facility.
Yes, I apologize. Yes. The PA Small Water and Sewer Grant from 2020 for the Charles Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project, that bid opening was the same day. We received six bids on that one ranging from $683,000 to $1.2 million. We have a grant for $406,000 from the state, which is 85% of... We have to try 15% match. So what we're probably going to have for the meeting, next meeting, would be consideration of an award to the low bidder, which was N. Abenizio Contractors. What we would do is we would immediately approve a change order as well. So we can kick in this round for quite sometimes, a 2020 grant. It was originally set to be a pipe bursting, where we actually slide a pipe through the existing pipe. That price came in at that one point. The low bid was $1.2 million. So we went back to the drawing board and looked at installing a new sewer line in the front yards of Upland Road and connecting the houses on Upland roadside under the new sewer, and then the houses on Charles Avenue, connect them into the existing sewer that's in Charles Avenue itself. So I think what my recommendation would be, award to N. Abenizio low bidder with a change order to be executed at the same time, which we would do, I'm going to call it, Damon, as Phase One, where we would install the sewer line in Upland Road, connect those houses on. That price comes out to $389,000, so it's within the budget. It allows us to at least move forward on some part of it. And then what we would do is the next time, which is usually annually, this grant opportunity is out there, we would apply for a Phase Two, which would be connecting the houses on Charles Avenue into the Charles Avenue sewer, and then we would abandon the sewer line in the rear of the homes, which has been the problem. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
And I think that is it.
They've waited a long time.
They're concluded?
Yes.
Okay. That goes to the council reports. Mr. Heller is not here tonight. So we have Mrs. Sawicki.
I have no report at this time, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Fovia?
So one quick report. Dave and I are going to be heading up the Business Revitalization Committee, and so we are scheduling the first meeting of that committee on Monday, July 8th, which is two Mondays from now, at 8:00 PM in the council room. After that point, they will be held the second Monday of every month, beginning at 7:00 PM. But just for this first meeting, we need to start at 8:00 PM.
They have a commitment that Monday before 8 o'clock, so that's why we're doing that.
And we already have several members lined up, but should there be any other business leaders in the community who would be interested in potentially joining, please contact me or Mr. Duplikie.
Are you going to have John advertise the meeting date?
Yeah.
Yes, we'll have to do that.
Because it's the first one, it'd probably be a good idea.
Well, maybe if you knew what the dates were between now and December, he could put a little blurb in. This way, have it all... Only have one ad. Well, it's a way to try to...
We know it's going to be the second Mondays of the month.
Oh, well, then John can help you.
And then should we put that on as an agenda item for next Monday that we can vote on?
Well, that's good. No, that'll be good, Dave. Yeah, that's good, Nora.
Okay, thank you.
Then you can send me an email with how you want to give me the name in particular.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that's it for me right now.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Heller?
Yep. So Town Watch met on Tuesday, June 6th. We covered a little bit of the spaghetti dinner. We also are working on a project with some funding that Town Watch was donated. We're working with the RAC Board on where that money should go. We had an anonymous donor that graciously gave Town Watch $10,000, and that money is to go for anything that's for the kids. So we're working with the RAC Board to determine some suggestions to bring back to Town Watch for Town Watch to make the final decision of where that money should go. Correct, John? All right. Technology and Communications met on Thursday, June 13th. We discussed the newsletter. We developed the Borough logo, branding for most of our communications. We also will be making a motion to advertise for a second meeting for technology each month. So, John, when you do the, I guess, that notification for the Business Revitalization, you can do it for the Technology Committee meeting. The second meeting is going to be held on the fourth Tuesday of every month at 6:30 PM. So will we make...
Can you send me an email?
Sure, I can. Absolutely. Because there was way too much stuff from the Technology and Communications just to do within a one meeting. So we're going to go to two meetings a month. We held the Concert in the Park, which was a huge success, on Saturday, June 15th. It was the Echoes of the British Invasion. We had over 70 people in attendance at Eden Park. The weather was perfect. The band was great. The company was awesome. We're holding the next Concert in the Park on Thursday, July 18th at 6:30 PM. It's going to be Shut Up Donny, and so hopefully everyone will come out for that as well. Books and Blankets are still occurring on Wednesdays in June at 10:30 AM. They're going to take the month of July off, and they're going to reconvene in August. Same thing every Wednesday at 10:30 AM. Yogi is still occurring every Thursday from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and it's a $10 drop-in, and that is held in the walking trail area. Pickleball is still every Monday night from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. We have Artful Aging this Sunday, June 30th, in the community room, starting at 1:00, and the craft is going to be a wind chime. The Parade Committee met on Wednesday, June 19th at 7:30 PM. We've already done some registration forms. We sent out some invitations. We are now deciding on grand marshal judges and who we're going to dedicate the parade to. So if anyone has any suggestions, ideas, please let us know. The next parade meeting is Wednesday, July 10th at 7:30 PM. The Family Day meeting was canceled for this month, but will be held on Thursday, July 25th at 6:00 PM. And our next RAC Board meeting is this Thursday, June 27th at 7:00 PM. I wanted to wish happy birthday to John Grant. His birthday is this week. And we have progress with the Fire Department ambulance shed project. It's... The demo has already been completed, and it's moving along very nicely. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. My committees did not meet this month, so I do not have a report, but I will make the announcement that there will be an executive session for personnel issue immediately following our workshop. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Ordinance Committee did not meet this month, but we will be meeting in July at our normally scheduled time, which is 6:30 on Thursday, July 18th. As many of you know, I'm a teacher by profession, and so I'm on summer break, of course, trying to plan a wedding and a honeymoon in between all that, but I had the fortunate opportunity to job shadow some of our borough employees. I went with the public fire safety officers. I met with Mr. Willward, our borough secretary, Delilah, the borough treasurer, our code enforcement officer, building inspector, to name a few, and I was thoroughly impressed by the hard work and dedication that these borough employees give to our borough. So I want to say hats off to all of them. I'm going to be meeting with Public Works next month, and I'm looking forward to that. Next meeting, which is a week away, I will be making a motion, as the borough solicitor already alluded to, to approve an ordinance to rescind the 2015 IPMC and replace it with the 2018 IPMC. And the last thing I want to say is that I want to apologize to the residents and people of the borough for my conduct last month. While I don't apologize for my message, I apologize for my tone and the way in which I delivered it. And yeah, it was out of line, and I apologize for that. And I will try to make sure that I do a better job going forward. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Mr. Duplikie?
Did you call me? Hello, everyone. For my report, I'm going to start with, you know, we're still going back and forth with the residents of Brookhaven Glen. I finally got to speak to somebody, a rep with the management company, Associate, and he will be emailing me like basically a bullet, you know, bullet list of to-do lists for, you know, what's going on, you know, going forward over there, with the timeframe, so hopefully... So I'll have a more thorough report for our council meeting, but he said he'll get that out to me. I tried very hard to reach somebody over there, so this person's one of the supervisors and associates, so hopefully I'll make some progress with, help these people out over there. With trash and recycling, just a quick reminder, next week is July 4th week, so no recycle will be picked up on Wednesday, July 3rd, ahead of the July 4th holiday. Public Works, I got a monthly report. I'm just going to go over a few of the items that were taken care of over the last several weeks. The Memorial Park building sewer lateral was cleared, as well as one in Samson Park building. Sewer main cleaning, they cleaned 13 sections of sanitary sewer mains for the month. There's 83 done already year-to-date. The second quarter, chipping was completed, and they did have 52 appointments to do chipping, so that's completed. In July, it starts again, five dates are already scheduled in July for chipping. So if anybody has, you know, tree debris and sticks and limbs, you know, set it up, call the borough and they'll come out and take care of it for you. Some plumbing issues at Memorial and Samson Park were handled, and mulching is still continuing, most recently at Somerville Park. So that's the Public Works report. The last thing I need to go over, the 120, the seasonal employees with Public Works, they're appointed to 120-day windows. That expires this Friday, the 29th. So I wanted to make a motion shortly to extend all the season, some of the seasonal employees to the new 120-day window. We need to make that motion tonight because if we don't, then Monday, July 1st, nobody will be able to work, so we need to do this. So I'm going to make this motion now. I want a motion to reappoint seasonal workers Bud Brzezinski, Matt Perronello, Brandon Stengel, Matt Barrowcloth at the rate of $20 an hour effective July 1st, 2024, for a new 120-day period.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And on our council meeting July 1st, there's two other employees that will be included in the seasonal, you know, seasonal help, too. The main thing for these four, Dave Evans, the supervisor of Public Works, needs these guys available July 1st, so that's what's going on.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Please, this is with the inspectors' report. Fire Marshal, Mr. Leslie.
Just a couple things regarding up to the public here and the council. Good evening, council.
Good evening, sir.
Residents of the borough. Just a couple things here. We had a house fire where 818 atoms last Saturday. I was unavailable, so I had the fire marshal from Lower Chight cover for me, and it came out that it was the same cause and origin as the CoCo's, spontaneous combustion on the outside of the dwelling. Okay? The Phillies weren't losing last Saturday. Everybody remember that? The neighbor came out and spotted the fire across the street. If the Phillies weren't losing, they would have lost that entire house.
Oh, my God.
Honest to God. Now, I saw the pictures and everything and talked to everybody. I talked to the neighbor. I talked to the homeowner. The homeowners weren't even home at the time. They still live in New Jersey. They were refinishing the floors. They put everything in a black trash bag out front, had it up against the garage door. The sun was setting in the west, was beating on that trash in the afternoon around 4:00, and that bag caught fire.
Oh, my goodness.
Caught the garage on fire, the bush and everything else. The people were really lucky.
Was the garage detached?
The garage is... Was attached. It is attached, yes.
Okay.
It was attached, but the people were really lucky.
Wow.
Okay? So with that same thing being said, now the borough charges $100 for a fire explosion NFPA 1921 report. Chris got a right to know. They want the report for free. I don't know how we go around. I don't know if he reached out to you, Mr. Wills. Did Chris Polo reach out to you about the charging or the right to know?
I will take a look at that. No, Mr. Polo has not yet brought that to my attention, but we know that people try to artfully...
Circumvent the system.
Circumvent from paying fees, right?
Correct.
We know that.
So their insurance company, the third-party investigator, reached out to Chris for a right to know. We vote the borough has always charged $100 to go into the borough coffers. I don't get it. The borough gets it just on out out there. That's going to be an upcoming...
No doubt, Mr. Polo will bring that to my attention.
Just giving you everybody a heads up. And the last thing, I follow the NFPA websites, so this is the new thing now that they're saying. Car fire and water bottles, okay?
What was it? I'm sorry. What was it?
Car fires and water bottles. On a hot sunny day, a clear plastic water bottle left in your car can act like a lens focusing sunlight and potentially igniting flammable materials inside your vehicle.
Oh, my goodness.
This can cause a fire, so it's best to keep water bottles out of direct sunlight and in your vehicle, out of your vehicles. There it is, right there.
I learn something new every day, Charles.
What about the...
Empty water bottles, water bottles on the dashboard on your seat, boiling in there. Empty water bottles, water bottles on the dashboard of your seat, boiling in there.
That's a no-no.
Right on the NFPA website.
That is a no-no.
Just throwing that out there. It's summertime, it's hot, last week was hot.
What about like the containers, like the plastic containers that you have, like?
I'm sure they would ignite also. It acts like a magnifying glass, apparently. That's what they're discovering. Everybody have a good week. Thank you.
Well, now, thanks for that.
And that opens up the second public discussion.
Oh, my goodness.
Second public discussion. Anyone? Anyone? Not at all, all right? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
Sure, move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sure nobody's opposed. Motion carried.